So when we get to this, when we get to this point. You can be supposed to just.
One, two, three. One. Two, three. Whenever your arm goes down, that's good. So pretty much whenever you're here, one, two, three.
I've never checked my mailbox. I don't even know where it is. Thank you. That was so nice of her to do. I said I think we need to do accounting one. Wouldn't that be cool to have everybody's logo on a? Yeah. Yes. Uh huh. Yeah. It'd be so cool to do something in the design or, well, I don't know. An apple or something that stands for school. Oh, I need to get my phone out there. So you don't think I'll go to jail? That's funny. Oh, thank you. Thanks. So you, so you don't think that, I mean. I got you. Yeah.
Welcome, everybody, to the Brunswick County Board of Education meeting, October 7th, 2025. And we're going to start tonight with a moment of silence. And next up, we'll have the South Brunswick High School JROTC with the presentation of the colors and also the pledge of allegiance.
Forward, march! Left turn, march! Right turn, march! Go the guard, march! Present, march!
I'm pointing to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, one liberty and justice for all.
Order, march! March on, march! Right turn, march! Forward, march! Go, college!
You may be seated. Board members in front of you tonight, you have the regular meeting agenda. If I can have a motion to approve is written. Motion by Miss Cook. Second by Miss Smith, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And next up, we have public address. Sharon Duncan was on for tonight, but she's unable to attend, and she'll be joining us at a future meeting. And next up, we have board salutes. And Ben, if you could join us, as well as the staff from South Brunswick Middle School, Mr. Wilson and his staff, and Michael and his family.
All right, so tonight, we are going to salute Michael for his heroic deeds. So tonight, we want to recognize an extraordinary student, Michael Hesians, a current seventh grade student at South Brunswick Middle School. Last year, as a sixth grader, Michael took Ms. Rup Calvis's Career Ready Paxton Patterson Lab class at South Brunswick Middle School. Michael recently demonstrated remarkable courage and composure in a real-life emergency that truly exemplifies life-impacting value of the skills learned in our career and technical education programs. When Michael's father was involved in an accident resulting in the loss of two fingers, Michael stepped up immediately using the emergency response skills that he learned in the EMT lab and Paxton Patterson lab. Michael calmly and clearly called 911, described the situation in detail, and rendered help until EMS arrived. This inspiring act not only saved valuable time in emergency, but also highlighted the practical and life-saving benefits of our Paxton Patterson CTE curriculum. Michael's parents expressed deep appreciation for the program and the confidence it gave their son at such a critical moment. We are proud to celebrate Michael tonight as an example of the positive impact our CTE programs have in preparing students not just for careers, but for life, which is what we do here at Brunswick County. So, Michael, if you could please come up, I would like to give you a board salute. Mr. Calvis and Mr. Wilson and Dawn, if you'd like to join us as well. I don't know what that is.
So I had the privilege to be Michael's fifth-grade teacher at Southport Elementary School, and I got to meet the Hesians family very well. So when I saw that Michael was in my Paxton Patterson class in sixth.
Check one, two, check, check, check.
I'm sure I can talk loud enough, but we just need to turn it off. It won't be the first time there's been technical difficulties. Not here, but like everywhere has a problem once in a while. Okay, we're going to go with it. Next up, we're going to have approval of the minutes from the September 2nd regular board meeting, as well as the September 23rd committee meetings consisting of curriculum and policy, finance and HR, and operations. If I can have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Motion by Miss Moffett. Second by Mr. Ganey, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, and next up, we have board committee reports. First up, some of the curriculum and policy with Miss Smith.
Well, hello, everybody. So I was under the weather and was only able to attend the committee meetings via phone conference, but I was able to attend, so that's positive. The board was presented an MOU to review for attending, extending the partnership between Coastal Horizons and Brunswick County Schools. And just so you know, Coastal Horizons provides counseling support for students, as well as parenting groups, to families of our students. So this was placed on the consent agenda for tonight's meeting. Mr. Pascal did an amazing job sharing, well, this too, but he shared an update to the school calendars for 25, 26, and 26, 27. They were initially designed and approved with half-days on the final day of each semester, so parents listen up. Due to the new potential opportunity for EOC, EOG readministration during the school year, a full instructional day is now needed. So in order to ensure sufficient time for that, for remediation and readministration and making up all those exams, he recommended, the staff was recommending, that we not do early dismissals on the final days of both semesters. So, sorry, boys and girls, you'll be okay. It'll be all right.
If I may add, she did say, just like we presented, it was proposed because we weren't quite sure if we would get that through, but we did receive since that board meeting official approval. So we're excited to be able to do the retesting during the school year.
Good, so we were proactive, paid off. Mr. Pascal also presented our accountability and testing data for the 24, 25 school year. And so I encourage parents and community members to go back and watch the committee meeting from September 23rd. You can find it on YouTube, in case you didn't know. You can also find the testing and accountability website on NCDPI for more information on your child's school or on our county data. So our teachers and staff are working really hard with our kids, and we are proud of them for, for the successes and what they've done. But we want to continue growing until all of our students are proficient. I mean, that is our overall goal, we want our kids to be proficient. And then we also had, Mr. Ganey presented Policy 3100, Curriculum Development, for a first reading, and recommended some changes to the policy. And basically, the policy just says that the board will have some input on beforehand on curriculums that are to be, to be presented back to the board, once the staff, we're gonna, we're going to look at them first, and then the staff will choose, and then we will approve them. Yeah, he's going to review out tonight for a second reading, so more on that to come.
Okay, next up, finance and HR, Miss Moffett.
Okay, so the two items I need to bring to your attention tonight is, we revised the school nutrition procurement plan wherein we approved to raise the purchasing procurement method from $3,000 to $10,000. And this allows our child nutrition department to align to the current micropurchasing threshold of $10,000, mainly due to rising costs of everything. So we need to increase that. And as far as the budget amendments that are on consent for tonight, these were tax refunds that were carried over and moved forward to the current year.
Thank you. And next up, operations, Miss Cook.
All right, we had three items. HVAC improvements is going to be under a design bill contract, that's at Bolivia School, and it's to replace an old one. The total is $2,199 and $479. Should be done if there's time over Christmas, and if not, it'll be done next summer. And then we also have an HVAC contract.
I thought I talked loud anyway. My husband says I do. Okay. Then we have an HVAC contract to work up to $300,000 for.
Contracted services.
To make the amendment, the contract, work up to $300,000. Correct. And then we have a gym floor replacement at Lincoln and Virginia Williamson. These will be $118,235, and these will make, all of them complete, except for Union, Bolivia, and Supply will all have new gym floors. And that was it for the operations.
Thank you. If I can have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Miss Moffett.
Approved.
Second by Miss Smith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Miss Smith, you approved it and threw me off.
Sorry about that. That's being proactive, Mr. Barger.
Next up, for the action items, the first one's going to be the 25, 26 Parent Advisory Council nominations for the names. Mr. Pascal, do you have anything to add?
No, you all received the names in the packet, and we're just asking for those to be approved and those groups to start working.
Motion to approve the name list as submitted?
Motion.
Motion by Miss Moffett.
Second.
Second by Miss Cook, all in favor say aye.
I just want to say a shout-out to the parents who actually participate on the Parent Advisory Council. I was able to do that for a while when my kids were in school, and it's, it's a really great committee of, of parents that come together with the staff at the schools, and a lot of good discussions go on there. And I just appreciate our parents who support our schools, so thank you.
Yeah, and if I may add, we do have those regular Parent Advisory Council meetings, so we'll be having several of those throughout the year. During that time, all of those members are now asked to come to those meetings. It used to be just the president, but anyone on the Parent Advisory Council is all asked to join us. We started that with Miss White leading it last year, so excited about moving into this year as well and getting those ready.
That's wonderful.
Thank you. And the last thing on the action item is Policy 3100, Curriculum Development. Mr. Ganey, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I mean, we presented it in committee, I think, did we? Capitalize.
I think, yeah, there was a little typo.
There was a grammatical change.
Little typo.
So we got, I see, we got that corrected. And basically, the changes are to bring the board in a little earlier in the process, and so that when the, I mean, it's like a nine-month process to adopt the curriculum. And by bringing the board in early, to be able to review the curriculums and familiarize itself with the curriculum that are going to be considered. When the final recommendation is made, just prior to needing to buy the materials, then we will have already seen it and will be able to sign off on it. Because we will have already been able to review the curriculums that are under consideration and will have already approved them. So that was basically the primary change. And by bringing the board in early, we also have an opportunity to have a little bit more input in certain areas of curriculum, curriculum consideration. So those were the two main changes, and if there are no questions or other changes, I would make entertainment part, may I go ahead, Chairman Barger?
Mr. Ganey, would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion that we accept the changes to our curriculum development policy as presented.
Mr. Ganey's made a motion, would anybody like to second it?
I'll second that.
Miss Moffett's second, so all in.
Just one, just one comment.
Hold on, we have a discussion.
Not, not necessarily a discussion, but just to be clear that this does not happen every year. This is a, this takes a long process, so it's not, we don't change curriculum every year, but when we do, it is a process that takes a lot of, a lot of work. So it would not be something that's going to be, you know, an every-year occurrence. So hopefully, we won't have to change it all the time, but it does change a lot. All right, now.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, next up, discussion and announcements from the superintendent. And Mr. Cole, if you don't mind, I would just like to quickly, remember Mr. Lemon again, who passed away recently. We had a couple different services for him, a lot of good turnout from staff and the community. Ed was a great mentor and friend to many of us on this board, the staff and this community, so we just wanted to remember him at our meeting officially.
Thank you, Mr. Barger. And members of the board, just, I guess, to highlight one other thing over the last month, I did want to give a thank you to Chief Adam Stanley and the Charlotte Police Department. They gave a donation this past month of $13,000 to our school district, and that was from, I think, some money that they gained through some drug issues that they dealt with. And I think allowing that money to support our students is a great use of those funds. And so we're going to put them to a great use, and I wanted to thank him and his department for that donation. I also wanted to do a quick congratulations to Mr. Pascal, Ms. Meredith Lloyd, and, I mean, there are several others that are going to be involved. But they were, I think, the creators of our attendance policy that we put in place last year to great effect to improve the numbers of chronic absenteeism, which is what we were calling it at the time. That's sort of the term that the state and across the nation that was being used. This board approved those policy changes. We put those into effect. There was some pushback from some parents, and I want to thank the board for supporting us when we got that pushback from some parents as a part of the policy change. The end result was that we were able to cut chronic absenteeism in half in Brunswick County schools, and particularly even more so in high schools, which I think contributed greatly to us having the highest graduation rate in our high schools last year that we've had in 10 years. Just the fact that they were at school, we were able to do some dropout prevention activities that we would not have been able to do if they weren't at school. That alone made a big difference. So I wanted to thank them for the hard work that they put into that. I also encouraged them, obviously, some, some state-level changes happened over the summer that took away our ability to have what we called FFs, which are attendance failures for students that were chronically absent. So we had to revamp that policy, and I think the policy we have now is even better than what we had the year before. And we have presented that at prior meetings, but I encouraged Mr. Pascal and his team to submit what they had done and the results that they had gotten to some state-level conferences, because I felt like it was something that the rest of the state might want to model, and they might want to advocate to DPI to maybe change that back. And, and we believe that attending school is important. What students learn when they attend school, not all of it is measured by a test score in English 2 and Math 3 and Biology. There's a lot more to high school than those three subjects. So, you know, when students are out of school, they're missing out on all kinds of training that they get that is going to help them become better future citizens of this state and this county and this nation. So we think it's extremely important, and we wanted people to see the success we had with the policy that we had put in place. And we wanted to prove to other school districts and show them the numbers that it can be done. If you commit to a policy and you hold, you communicate it well, and you hold people accountable, the kids, for the most part, will do what you ask. So I just wanted to make you aware that we were notified this week that the North Carolina Principals and Assistant Principals Association has approved Mr. Pascal and Ms. Lloyd's presentation for their fall instructional symposium this year, and they're going to be one of the highlighted presentations for the entire symposium. So I think that says a lot for their work. Dr. Brad Lewis from South Brunswick High School, Ms. Allison Dixon from Belleville Elementary, and Erin Rutkowski, our district, one of our district's social workers. They are going to be part of that presentation as well, so it'll be a team presentation that hopefully their work can have an impact throughout the state, and I wanted to recognize them for that. And at this point, what I would like to do is lead off a discussion of the school bond referendum, if that, are you okay with that, Mr. Barger? You should be able to pull up an updated list of the proposed projects and costs, I think, Tori, if you could. I'm sorry, Ben. We have continued to have conversations with our counterparts at the county. Ms. Wissy and I attended yesterday's commissioners' meeting because, again, we want, we have always done things in Brunswick County as a team between the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners. And we want to continue that and have as much open communication as we can. We listen to the feedback that we received from the commissioners, and we've made adjustments as a result. And we want to be prepared to present to them a list of projects with estimated pricing on October 20th. That is what they have invited us to do. One of the big decisions that had to be made tonight was whether or not this Board of Education wanted to pursue having the bond referendum on the March primary ballot or if we wanted to move it back to the November general election ballot. And I think we've discussed these before, but just to reiterate, the positives for a March ballot are, one, if it's approved, allows us to get to work a lot earlier on an elementary school that we desperately need in the northern part of the county. The longer we push it back, the more likely it will be that the school will open a year later than what we had planned. We were shooting for 2028. By moving things back to the November ballot, there's a very good chance that it would get pushed back a half a year or a full year to August of 2029, depending on the weather. Obviously, in Brunswick County, you can have a big storm, and that can have a lot of impacts on construction schedules. Other positives are in primaries, you tend to have, you know, in general, fewer voters, but those voters tend to be more informed voters who are absolutely going to research everything. And we feel like the folks who research exactly what we're asking for and why are absolutely going to vote in favor of this bond. We feel like there's a better chance of folks in the November election voting against something that maybe they haven't educated themselves on as much as maybe they should. Another part of the March ballot that is a negative is the amount of time we would have to make presentations. We're not allowed to campaign for it, but we're allowed to do everything we can to inform the voters all over the county about what we're asking for and why. And I think in 2016, our research showed that the commissioners approved it for the fall ballot, and the district campaign began the next day, and that was six months before the election, which I'm not sure if the early voting rules were the same in 2016 as they are now. But early voting rules now are, if it's on the primary ballot for March, early voting begins on February 12th. So, essentially, we would have about three and a half months to campaign for a successful bond referendum, which I'm a little nervous about that timeframe. I think it's doable. We have a plan in place and a list of all the places that we plan to present and ways to communicate with the folks that can get us on the agenda. But it is a tighter timeframe than we had last time. Now, with the November ballot, I've discussed some other things, but the biggest thing is it would give us more time to campaign. The drawback is that now in North Carolina, you can only put a bond referendum on the ballot every two years or on even numbered years. So, if it, for some reason, does not pass in November, we're not going to be able to run another ballot, another bond referendum until two years after that, which, based on our data, would be catastrophic for our school capacity issues in the northern part of the county. We would have, we could not wait that long. We would have to go another route. And that would be a local option bond or some other method that the commissioners would have to propose to build an elementary school. And any other method would be more expensive than a general bond referendum to the taxpayer. So, that was the first part of this. I would love to have a unanimous vote by the commissioners in favor of our bond referendum. And I do not feel that we could get a unanimous vote for a bond referendum in March. That is just my feelings. So, I did want to put that out there. I do think it's a very strong possibility that we could get a unanimous vote from the commissioners for November. But that is, I would say, the first decision that I think, before I go through this, I think you should probably discuss if you would like to have it on the March ballot, pursue that or pursue a November ballot.
Well, the decision is commissioners' back.
Yes, sir. But it's really about what our recommendation is.
Or what our request is.
What our request is.
Right.
In talking with Chairman Forte today before our meeting, I don't think he has the votes to do a November, I mean, a March. I have concerns about trying to educate the public too in three months and sell this thing, as important as it is.
I can't imagine that anyone who lives in Brunswick County that walks out of their house and goes down the road in their vehicle cannot see that we desperately are going to need to build some schools. My concern is if we wait, that just delays our progress. And I, for one, don't want to put any more modulars at our schools. I just feel like we're just kicking the can down the road. I don't, I'd rather get started sooner rather than later. And then if it doesn't pass in March, then we go to November. But at least we can say we would have tried because I want that school to open in 2028. I don't want it to open in 2029.
I agree with you.
Well, in addition to what you said about modulars, they're not only, they're not cost-effective, but they're not safe for the kids. There's numerous reasons why they're not safe, but...
They're temporary.
They're temporary. And if you look at this bond, everything is a need. There's nothing frou-frou about it. It is schools, the bleachers. Mr. Smith has talked about those being, they're very, very old, they're not safe. The reason why Shiloh Middle School would be getting a multipurpose field is because they don't have a community field like Smithville or, you know, the other Town Creek areas have. And they can't maintain the fields for all the sports that are being played. There's a safety aspect to Town Creek, getting the governor's road extension. Intercoms are definitely a safety issue, and we are going to need more development for future schools. And the first four line items are schools. I mean, we definitely need that. I would, like you, love to see March. I don't, it's like you said, there's construction all over this county, and housing is going in everywhere. And we have no choice but to build schools, like, as soon as possible. I don't know that we can take the chance on not being able to, if it didn't, for some reason, pass the first time we put it out, maybe from lack of information or whatever, we would have to wait two more years to put it out? That would put us in a bad place. That would put our kids in a bad place.
Well, I think we'd like to see ideally a unanimous vote, but a majority could happen as well, which would not necessarily be unanimous, but it would still give us the leverage to begin the process where if we just wait and say, gosh, you know, we could have done that, I mean, all we can do is try. And if we fail to try, then we won't know if it was a possibility or not. I just feel like, you know, it is a need. I mean, it's obvious it's a need. And, you know, and the figures, you know, we've worked and worked and worked on the figures back and forth, and we've had the liaison committee and then the commissioners' meetings, and we've tried to hone down what really is pertinent to the county. And so that the county as a whole will have benefits from the bond, it's the North End, because, but that's where the explosion is taking place right now. And that's the primary need. That's why they're set up in different phases. But I feel like it's, I just feel like it's worth a try, to try for the spring bond. And if it doesn't pass, we just get more leverage and we head out for the next round.
Wait till November, we're putting all of our eggs in one basket.
Is anybody dead set against March?
Why was Mr. Forte thinking? I mean, what's their reason? The education of the public? What is...
He just didn't think he had the votes. And that was nothing official. They haven't voted on it.
Right, right, right. I just didn't know if he had shared.
He wasn't sure he had the votes.
Okay.
I think we owe it to our, to our students, to our parents, to our community to advocate for this.
Ms. Moffett, in answer to your que, I think that question was answered when we made the presentation at the commissioners' meeting. The two reasons I heard was, one, I don't think you have the time to campaign to get it approved. And then the other was more of a principle of, I feel like, you know, something this large ought to be on the general ballot as opposed to the primary ballot because that's when most people vote. And, you know, my answer to that was, everybody can vote in the primary. There's nothing that keeps people, maybe this creates more voters in the primary, and that's a good thing, you know? So, that was my answer. Now, maybe not everybody agrees with that, but that is, in fact, true. We're not keeping anybody from voting in March. Everybody can come vote in March if they care strongly about this bond referendum or who is running for election.
Everybody should be voting anyway.
So, anyway, that's the answer I would give you because those were the two answers that I heard at the commissioners'.
So, if you put it on in March and it doesn't pass, you can, you can educate more and put it back on in November.
That is correct, but there is some research out there that says that if a bond doesn't pass and you run it again in the same year, there is some research that it's harder to pass the second time.
Yes, I get that.
You know? So, that's not always true, but it is more so than normal.
If we put it on in November and it doesn't pass, you have no shot for two years.
No shot for two years.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Well, the, it's the commissioner's decision. If the commissioners decide that they want to do it in November, which it sounds like that's the direction that they're going, then they have to be prepared to address the consequences of that. And as long as we make them aware of what those consequences are, then I think we've done our job in terms of representing the school district, students, and parents because it's, they don't have the option to do nothing. And as long as they make the decision to put it on November, not just because of how many, you know, what kind of voter turnout is going to be in November and our ability to maximize our opportunities to pass it, though they also know that this is the consequence of putting it there. You know, you're going to have to do a local option bond. I mean, if they're willing to do it under those conditions, then I'm perfectly happy to do it. But I think we need to get their buy-in, that are you, you know, are you aware of what the options are if it doesn't pass? And are you willing to meet those obligations in the event that it doesn't pass in November?
I think the demographic study speaks for itself.
Well, and if the pleasure of the board is to wait and have more information and have more, I mean, I certainly, you know, will support the board, whatever the board feels like is the best option. It's just, you know, unfortunate that we aren't three months back, you know? But it's, that's just, that's just been the progress, so.
When we go present to them at their next meeting, we'll hear what ballot they're willing to put it on. But I'm not hearing anybody saying they're adamantly against putting it on March. So, we'll go there and advocate for our position and hopefully they give us March. But if not, we'll be ready for November.
Well, if we legally, if we're going to fit the timeframe for them to be able to do what they need to do to get it on the March ballot, should it be approved? I need to be able to submit some paperwork to the county this week. So, what I'm hearing from this board is, we've been invited by the Board of Commissioners to come and make a presentation of what we are asking for and recommending on October 20th. What I am hearing is that we want to aim for March ballot. And then it's up to the commissioners to make a decision. Is that correct?
Clearly, it's up to the commissioners to make a decision, yes.
Well, they had asked...
But we need to have the information to present to them as the actual need for...
They had asked me to provide them with a legal resolution that this board had voted on. So, if that's what you want, I have a resolution that I can get you to sign, but you guys would need to, I guess, first of all, vote to add this to the action agenda for tonight and then vote to approve a resolution to have a bond referendum on the March ballot. And then I can have you sign that, and that can be part of my packet that I submit to the county. And that doesn't make the commissioners do that. It's just the lead-up to that October 20th presentation.
Can you pull the resolution up on the screen? Mr. Cron, can we add something to the action agenda after it's already passed and the agenda was already approved? Okay.
I don't have the resolution added to this, but it basically just states what I just said, that the board has voted to approve a resolution to place a bond referendum on the March ballot to be considered by the county commissioners.
All right. Count a motion to add the resolution to the action agenda as stated by Mr. Cole.
Simon.
Motion by Ms. Cook.
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, so that will be action item number three, resolution. All right, now if I can have a motion to approve the resolution, that was just recently added.
Simon.
Motion by Ms. Cook.
Second.
Second by Ms. Moffett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Did anyone have any questions about the updated bond list? We listened to feedback from the commissioners. We have made changes that were suggested to us that we felt like we could make work. We also have added some projects that are necessary projects in other parts of the county. We, but obviously, the vast majority of it is for two schools, an elementary school and a high school in the northern part of the county, along with the land to build those schools on. Those are the top four items. At the bottom, you see site development, future school. The leftover 10.4 million would be used for site development for the second elementary school that we know we're going to need by the end of this decade. That is not going to be enough to build the school, but it will allow us to purchase the additional land, start clearing it, and start master planning and programming so that we can be ready to go when we get to that point in the decade. Now, whether it'll be funded through another general option, a general bond or a local option bond, I don't know. That would be a decision for the commissioners when we get to that point. But there's no doubt in my mind that we're going to need that second elementary school. So, if we can, what, if it ends up being a local option bond five or six years from now, this is 10 and a half million less that we will have to finance and that the taxpayer will have to pay for.
I think it's important to reiterate what Ms. Moffett was saying. Yes, the majority of this bond would be schools because that's the need. But every area is getting something. You know, South High would be getting the softball fieldhouse. Shiloh Middle School is getting the turf field, she said one. And then all the high schools and those three middle schools are getting indoor bleachers. I mean, so, everybody will benefit from this in some way. I mean, every area, every region of the county. So, I think that's important for parents to...
Yeah, I could reiterate that those wooden bleachers are original to those schools. They don't, they do not meet current handicap access code. They're not required to by law, but they're starting to fall apart. There are a lot of work and money to maintain, and that would benefit three of our middle schools and all of our high schools. Ms. Moffett was talking about the multipurpose turf field at Shiloh Middle. And I've shared before, we're not looking to have turf fields at all of our middle schools. At our other middle schools, we have multiple fields because we partner with the county. And so, since we've added lacrosse, at Shiloh, we can't keep grass on that field. And when we added lacrosse, we really have to add another field or we've got a turf field we've got. Shiloh is unique in that it doesn't have a... Shalote is unique in that it doesn't have a community field, not like they do at Town Creek, at Cedar Grove, at the other middle schools. So we, I mean, it's a safety issue that a turf field would solve. And it would allow County Parks and Rec, they are very excited about this, if we can get this done, because they're going to use that field for a lot of the recreation sports in Shalote, as they should.
Which would benefit--
Which would benefit the town and the county as a whole. So the South Brunswick High School softball field, through no fault of anyone, it is not on par with what West and North have. And as a result, I mean, there's the, the restrooms for spectators. There's only one toilet in the women's bathroom there and it's a long ways from the school building. We have been, last year, we pulled up a trailer of very nice porta-potties, but that trailer cost us $20,000 to lease for the season. So we don't want that as a recurring expense. We can build, we also don't have a locker room for softball at South Brunswick High School. They change in the bathrooms in the school building. So if we can build them a softball fieldhouse that is a combined concession stand at the ground floor and a press box with bathrooms and a locker room for the team in the back, that will solve everything and put them on par with what North and West have. The extension to Governor's Road, I've shared before, Town Creek, Middle and Elementary, there's one way in and one way out. It tends to flood during storms. It's one of our shelters, but it gets blocked off a lot of times. That area of the county is also growing exponentially as a result. With all of the traffic coming in, it gets backed up out into 17. Having another access point gives us a way for emergency vehicles to get in at high-traffic times. It also gives us the option to have two entry and exit points possibly in the future, one for the middle school and one for the elementary school. And then, of course, our intercoms are extremely old, falling apart. We can't get parts for them anymore. We're having to get custom parts made to keep them going. That's a safety issue for our schools. If there's a lockdown or anything, we have to be able to have access to intercoms. And I've explained the site development item. So that's, that's what we have. We have gotten it under 350 million, which was something we also heard from the commissioners that they would like to see. We have done that through making some changes. We also moved the total amount for the high school down to 198,900,000. Based on our estimate, that's not going to give us everything that we need, but we'll build everything that we can with that amount. I don't know if the board saw that New Hanover County Schools were recently in the news. They approved, their board approved their renovation of New Hanover High School and it was over $230 million. So I, I had some, some folks have some questions about the $234 million number and I explained to them that is, school construction now is $420 to $440 a square foot. That's what it costs. And if we wait five years, it's going to cost more because it's basically 3% construction cost inflation per year right now.
And that doesn't include fields, right?
No. So, you know, we, we have given some on that and we're going to build what we can. And, and we're going to design the schools so that we can add to it later and that might be part of a future bond in order to meet the needs of our high schools as they grow. So that's all of it.
I, I, when we looked at these, and I think they were a little bit different, projects and the amounts and the staging of it all, one, two and three. Because I had asked that we consider, I'd asked, I think, that we look at what we could do in phase one to reduce the spend there so that we could bring the bleachers, the multipurpose field and the softball fieldhouse into, from phase three to phase one.
Mr. Gany, if, I think Ms. Wissie, we have done some work on that and that, some of these changes were a result of that request that we felt were beneficial. Ms. Wissie, you want to explain that?
Yes. So the phasing of that is actually the way the funding will drop down. We have some room to move things around as projects. So as we've not spent all of phase one for one project, we can move a phase three project up and begin it and kind of shift it as it goes. This is the way that we're, we're getting the funding, but not necessarily the timing of the projects. As we, as we free up funding, we'll be able to move your projects from the top.
But are we gonna, for example, those communities that are going to get the bleachers, the field, the turf field and the fieldhouse, are they going to look at the ballot and it's going to show as phase three?
The ballot's just going to have the verbiage for the total amount.
It will have the amount on it. It won't necessarily say the, the date that we'll begin, or phase three. We will put them--
So why are we phasing it then?
This, this, I'm sorry, this was a, a financial document that I needed to share with the county. So we put the phasing in because that's, that's the lump sums that we will be taking out the bond amounts in. We'll take it out in three phases. We'll get the money in three different phases. But how we determine to prioritize the projects timewise will be up to the board.
So any future digital representations or printed representations of these proposed projects? Are you saying it's just as, we can just as easily say that item eight, nine and 10, that those are now phase one? Or do we have to make an adjustment in phase one to do that?
We'll work them on the back end to adjust the projects to the timeline that you prefer them to be done in.
Well, it's not so much what we prefer as it is to be able to reassure the public.
We can--
You know, we don't want a conflict between what they're seeing printed and discuss.
Absolutely.
And then what we're telling them.
Okay. We'll change this. We can add another line so, or change the wording on it so that the timeline of starting the projects can be more in line with what you prefer or what the board would choose that we do, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, it sounds like we've got safety issues related to those, those smaller projects. They're pushed out five years right now.
We don't necessarily have to do that. No, we can start earlier.
But I mean, if, if you're looking at the document, they're pushed out five years. I think we need to bring the document into alignment with what we intend to do and how we intend to present it to the public. So the public can say, oh yeah, great, we're getting that, you know, in 2026 rather than, you know, 2030. And there not be any disconnect between what is printed and presented and what we're saying that we feel like needs to be done. And I feel like that we do need to do that. I think items eight, nine and 10 need to go into phase one. It'll help us in the passage of the bond and it sounds like it's, there's a serious need for those items now.
I agree. I would want that to be in priority of the bond because you don't want North, even though it's a great need, to just be benefiting in the early stages. We would want everybody to be benefiting. Because of, you know, I've, I've been to the middle schools. My kids played sports at all the middle schools and I'm, I've seen the bleachers. They're horrible. They're unsafe. They're not up to code like Mr. Cole said. The softball fieldhouse definitely needs to be in alignment with the other schools and I would like to see that moved up as well so that they're on the front end of the phasing and not pushed out to where someone feels like, well, that's great, but we get that in five years. You know, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I do think the presentation and the understanding of the public, it would be better.
Sure.
And our priority for those people as well.
We can make that happen.
Good.
Okay. Well, then, other than that, I, I have the, the information that, that I need for the, to put together a presentation for the 20th. And so my team will be working on putting that together and we'll share it with you before the 20th so that the board can take a look at it and give us any feedback.
All right, motion to go to closed session.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Gany. Second by Ms. Cook. On purpose, aye?
Aye.